Welcome, everybody, to the first of two Planning Commission hosted meetings on the revised land use development regulations. It's a project that we've been working on with PlaySense, some consultants, for the last almost two years now, since we redid the town plan. The land use development regulations are the means by which the town plan is implemented. So we've made a real strong effort to back up the decisions that we made in forming the town plan and realize that there may be some important feedback from those people who are affected by the changes that we have made. But the changes that we have made have been, as I say, in support of the decisions we made almost two years ago now in crafting the town plan. And we believe they support those goals and objectives that we outlined in that. I don't want to get into any specifics here, but I'd like to turn it over to our consultants, Rod and Brandy, who are from PlaySense and who have helped us do actually both projects. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Jim. I'm Brandy.
Hello, I'm Rod.
And we're going to give you a little orientation to how we're going to try to structure tonight's meeting. So I'm glad we're gonna start.
Right, so this is the sort of housekeeping slide. You're all responsible for your own refreshments, so I'm sorry about that. The idea here is that we're doing the introductions right now. The format for this evening is going to be a short presentation by us, PlaySense team. And then while we're doing that, we are encouraging those people that have the function available to them to use the chat box function on Zoom to post brief questions. So the kinds of questions are, we have in mind here, are clarification questions. Or if you have a specific question about your property, then this is the moment to give us your email one address, if you know it. And then just in the briefest possible terms, ask a question. And we don't promise that we can respond to all these questions tonight, but we are hoping that the very straightforward questions, the kinds of clarifications, and I have this property and I think I might have this problem, kinds of questions, that we can collate those and provide you answers. If not tonight, then via email in the coming days. So so the key to a successful Zoom meeting is to remember that it's being recorded. So anything that you do say will be available to everybody via the cloud forever. So just keep that in mind. If you are using the phone, we will try and get around to you and make sure that you have an opportunity to ask questions if you phoned in. But if you're using a smartphone or an iPad and you're using the web link, then we're going to treat you as if you've got a computer, because that's the way it will work. Zoom etiquette, when you're not speaking, please have yourself muted. Familiarize yourself with where the controls are so that you can unmute yourself if you're called on. But until you're called on, please stay muted. There's a sort of a bandwidth problem where when everyone is unmuted and then the background noise from everybody's households contributes to a reduced ability for anybody to hear anything. So muting is important. Like I said, use a chat box where possible. You'll see on the bottom of the screen that we're showing you right now a screenshot of what the bottom of the Zoom user interface should look like. And so I'm hoping that while we've got that sitting up there, you can follow those instructions if you're not familiar with the Zoom functions. And then lastly, again, Zoom etiquette, you'll see a function where you're able to raise your electronic hand to be recognized to speak. Please try and use this. If you can't use that function or it's not working very well for you, at least raise your physical hand and at some point, somebody will hopefully recognize that you've got your hand in the air. And then, yeah, make sure to use your address if you've got a specific question. So that's all in terms of housekeeping matters for tonight.
Okay, so we can move on to the content of the presentation. So just in terms of setting the framework for why Warren is working on a zoning revision. And as Jim says, the planning commission has been working on it for some length of time at this point. And he also pointed out that just previous to that, they had been working on a town plan update. And that is the town plan that drives the revision to the zoning. Warren's town plan laid out really specific strategies and goals and some pretty specific action items for updates to the zoning. And so those were definitely one of the driving factors here. And then there's always ongoing changes in state and federal law that local regulations need to keep pace with. So there's some housekeeping there, that some things that need to be to fix to stay in compliance. And then from the sort of administrative and usability side, there was a goal to improve the certainty and clarity of the regulations for applicants to try to get rid of basically gray that existed and was recognized as existing in the current regulations. This is helpful to applicants, to the zoning administrator, to the development review board. So everyone has a better idea of what is required, what the rules are, what to expect from the process.
Okay. So the key thing for us is that this is an iterative change and it's been an opportunity to make sure that the current town plan, which sets out policies and goals and captures the community's expectations, are appropriately transmitted through the land use regulations and that the policies and community expectations that are encoded in the town plan guide the land use regulations. It's not a whole-scale overturn of the old document. What it is, is completely reformatted. And as Brandy just pointed out, it's the effort here is to eliminate a lot of the gray area and contradictions or ambiguities that were contained in the old regulations. And part of the benefit of the new structure of the document is to, first of all, make it a contemporary document that rather than being read on paper, will be parked on people's computers and has built-in hot links so that you can move backwards and forwards in the document with ease. And that it's, that the clarity of the structure of the document ultimately should help applicants, the zoning administrator and the D I B in implementing decisions. Those districts that were understood to be working before, that were effective and represented the town's preferences, such as the village, are left largely unchanged. And that where there was a mismatch between the existing development patterns, the stated land use goals in the plan and regulations, we've strived with the Planning Commission to identify those areas and to work with them through so that there's now less of a mismatch. Hopefully, there's some consistency between what you see on the ground right now, what the land use goals are in the plan, and how the regulations are going to implement that plan.
So we're going to start with a broad overview of the zoning district map and the zoning districts changes that might be occurring to those zoning districts. We're going to present all of the zoning districts for the entire town, but then we're going to focus in a little more detail this evening on the village area, the resort area, and the business districts. There's another meeting coming up on June 14th that will look at the rural and conservation districts. If you're not able, and residential districts, if you're not able to come to that meeting and you have a question or a comment you want to submit on those districts, it's perfectly fine to do that tonight, but we are going to focus more of the presentation on the village, resort and business areas tonight. So part of the review process, largely driven by the town plan goals again, was to look at zoning district boundaries. There was particularly a lot of language in the town plan regarding regarding protecting the protection of natural resource areas and high-relevation areas and overall land conservation goals. There's also language about trying to encourage more compact housing in the growth areas of the village and the resort that they're designated in the town plan. So these caused us to go to start this process of looking at the zoning district boundaries to really look at whether that map was still reflective of the community's overall goals and the existing pattern of land development and conservation and the capability of land and its suitability. So this led to making some changes. And then this is common practice at this point is to try to make zoning maps that follow parcel boundaries as much as possible. So far fewer parcels will hopefully be divided by a zoning district in Warren. And when we do divide something, the goal is to generally find a recognizable feature on the ground to follow. So whether that's a stream or something like that. So the result is a new map that hopefully you can see. Obviously, at the scale, you can't see the details, but the broad picture, it's not, as we said, this is not a wholesale change. This is, this is a refinement of what existed, and I think you can see that in the overall pattern here. And we're going to talk through those changes, district by district. Do it again, adding new slides.
Okay. So what you have before you here is an effort, a table summarizing the major districts. So what we've tried to do in this table is just outline in text what the key changes are. So for the village district, you'll see that this encompasses, for the village area, this encompasses business, mixed-use and residential districts. It's the same three districts. There's very small adjustments to the boundaries with the one exception of adding the so-called Whitworth parcel, which is about 35 acres, I believe, and lies just to the west of the existing village. And so that's, that's a notable exception to the, everything's much the same. The resort district, districts encompass both mixed-use and residential. It's a replacement, there's two replacement districts here. The significant expansion of boundaries to allow for future growth in resort activity. And that is mostly associated with the expectation that over time the resort will achieve four-season resort operations and therefore need expanded area. The last one is kind of an effort to streamline and organize the business district a little better. So we've consolidated three small districts, the so-called airport district, the Bobbin Mill district and the access road intersection. And we've made minor adjustments to boundaries to allow for some programmatic and planned growth in these districts. But basically, it's much the same as what you would see today. So there you go.
So the proposed zoning has split the rural residential district into residential and rural, so two separate districts. That is an effort to discourage sort of ongoing fragmentation, to identify areas that are either more residential now or suitable for more compact residential development in the future. And then separate that from the areas that are more rural still in nature with larger patterns of lot. Most of the area in East Warren, for example, that's in the Meadowland overlay areas, most of that area is in this rural district. There's also been a change to the subdivision and the density standards that we're going to talk through in some detail on the 14th next month. And this, because of the new approach, it was, we were able to sort of eliminate the overlay, the Meadowland overlay as a separate district and integrate it into the standards for the rural district a little more efficiently. The conservation district, if you remember the visual from the previous slide, that's the darkest green color, it sort of stood out. That has expanded from what's called the forest reserve district now. Currently, the forest reserve is basically the upper elevations on either the west and east side of town. So there, that we're adding to and incorporating more of the other public and conserved lands in Warren, thus giving you a real better sense when you look at the map. So those areas of town where you know that development isn't going to occur or where it does occur, it's going to recur at very low intensities. A significant portion of the land that's in that conservation zone is either conserved farm or forest land or it's public forest land. So now we're going to move to walking through the village districts. And we're going to be showing you initially a border collie and, no, another dog. And then a, so we're going to start with what the zoning map looks like now and then show you how it would change in that area. And that will hopefully, at a higher detail than you just saw in that first snapshot of the map, give you a better sense of what is going on. If you want to zoom in and you have, if you're on your computer now and you have access to the new website that the town put together, the planning planningwarren.org, I think it is. That has access to a map where you can actually zoom into your individual property and get a better idea of what is going on, district wise there. So the first one we're going to look at is the village business area. So this, this is one of the core of the village where most of the businesses are and civic buildings are. What we're proposing here is to shift that a little bit so that we are capturing that core a little bit more precisely. But generally, the main portion where the inn and the store are still remain there. The dimensional standards would change a little bit, allowing for more lot coverage, which is actually more reflective of what's already on the ground now. And then increasing how much, the density of housing, so it may be possible to add some more housing in downtown, in the village business area. This is one of the goals from the town plan, is to try to encourage more housing in and around the village. And sort of a review of what's allowed for uses. There's an effort to try to make more of the businesses in the village area permitted uses and make that permitting process a little more streamlined for those businesses in this area. The, the mixed-use area, this is what it, same map, obviously, is what it currently looks like. That's the orange area surrounding the village business, it was dark red. You can see that there's, once again, just some small adjustments to those boundaries around the village. Warren created the village mixed-use district not that many years ago. It was one of your more recent zoning revisions. And we're basically keeping that going forward. Once again, just a slight increase in how much housing could be built, increasing the density to eight dwelling units to the acre with the availability of wastewater to the village. That makes a higher density of housing feasible there.
Yeah, sure. So village residential, there's a slight expansion of this boundary, noting before what we said about the Whitworth parcel. No substantive changes into dimensional standards. And there's some minor changes to allowed uses, which is mostly around the question of consistency and the reflection of contemporary expectations.
So moving up to the resort, this is the current resort area, the dark blue being the mixed-use and the lighter blue area being the residential. This is one of the more significant map changes. As you can see, this is a significantly larger area. It really reflects the reality on the ground. This dark blue area, the mixed-use now fully encompasses the resorts, properties and many of the businesses along the access road. It takes in the golf course. So it's not just the core village area up at the top of the mountain. It really reflects more fully the tourism sector and recreation opportunities as a whole up on the mountain. While the boundaries are changing a lot, there's actually not a lot of significant changes to the dimensional standards. And then in terms of the use, like in the village business district, there's an effort to move things from being conditional to being permitted with site plan review, to just streamline that permitting process. These are obviously the areas, the village business and the resort mixed-use areas that the town plan calls for to be focuses for business development. And so it makes sense to say, yeah, these, these are the types of uses that we not only expect, we actually want to promote in these areas. The residential area around the resort is obviously the same, two maps again. Once again, just expanding that out to really encompass what's, what exists on the ground today and more fully the area around the resort that is or could be served by their infrastructure and could be, or is used for housing. And again, very little change to the dimensional standards or the uses, really just focused on the boundaries.
So with business general, again, we've consolidated this into a single district. There are substantial changes to dimensional standards. An increase in lot size, two, three acres, and a decrease in lot coverage to 30%. Thus, with the expectation that with adequate site plan review, there'll be more buffering and through landscaping and other measures to ensure that the impacts of the development are contained on site, on the parcel and consistent with design preferences expressed in the plan. So we've also allowed for expansion of allowed uses to accommodate more types of business. Again, this depends, this relies on, rather than conditional use being the tool, it's permitted use in conjunction with site plan standards. And then lastly, we've broadened the number of permitted uses in the business district.
So that actually hits the overview of the districts that we were going to cover tonight. And we have, going to switch off the slideshow, I think, for right now and try to get to the chat box here where I believe we started to see some people come in okay, with, with questions. So we have a question from Pam Piper. And I think we've also seen a similar comment or two along these lines come in through the website. And that is probably something to mention as well, that the Planning Commission's website has a very easy way to submit comments and questions. If you think of things after this meeting, you can go ahead and use that. And we've had it, they've had it up for a little while and starting to get some comments in. But so Pam's question here relates to how does the rezoning affect taxes? This is always a question that comes up when communities are making zoning changes. And in theory, you know, how one's land is zoned does affect property value. But in reality, in Vermont's assessing practices, it actually doesn't affect it very much. Land in Vermont, in most instances, is assessed a lot more based on what it's currently used and developed for than what it has potential to be used and developed for. This may not hold true in some sort of special use areas, like in, you know, industrial parks, site, business park type settings and such. But for general rural and residential land, that's typically the case. So that, that's the answer to that, we often see to that, we give to that question.
I think the other point to be made in most communities in Vermont is that in terms of your total tax bill, the education tax is a significant portion. And the change in property valuation and tax rate, which are separate questions, each of those are separate questions, combined gives you your municipal tax rate, your municipal tax. And that, that is generally lower as a proportion of your total taxes than education taxes.
So we don't have too many folks submitting questions in writing. We have gotten a few that are property-specific. We're probably going to hold those and try to do responses to individual specific property questions in writing. Probably is useful to say that the planning commission is collecting all of the comments and it will be reviewing them all and responding to them in that process. But we do have, let's see, some questions that have just come in. A question from Samuel Starks regarding the permitted uses in the resort mixed-use versus the resort residential district. So one of the things that in the current zoning right now, there is more overlap between the residential and the mixed-use district in terms of the uses. So there is more extension of sort of resort recreation uses into the residential. By enlarging the mixed-use area, that became less necessary, shall we say? And there is a bit more of a distinction in terms of the uses. So one of the best ways to get a really good sense in terms of your zoning district, what the uses are, the full draft of the ordinance, of the regulations is up on the Planning Commission website. There is a table, a large table in it, that's section 2112, 2122, 2112. And that table runs through all of the uses. It defines the uses and it tells you whether that use is permitted with, indicated by a P, conditional, indicated by a C, or prohibited, indicated by an X in each district. So in looking at some of the resort, so if we look at some of the commercial uses, so for instance, things like retail sales might be, are allowed in the mixed, resort mixed-use, but not in the resort residential. Whereas lodging, lodging facilities Whereas lodging lodging facilities um are permitted in the resort mixed use. But are conditional in the resort residential, so it's possible to to get them, but they require a a hearing and approval through the DRB. So by going through that, you can get a sense of fully what, you know, is allowed and um is not allowed in your particular district. So when we get up to the last slide, there is a um, you'll be able to see the link. So for those of you who are looking for that link, you'll see it in the final um slide as well. Um so once again, I think we had some people who joined um perhaps a little late as well and missed the introductions. Um I'm Brandy Saxton, planner with Placense, and this is Rod Francis.
Hello, I'm I'm with Placense too.
So um a couple of folks, let's see. So here's a question about um existing small businesses in residential areas going. Uh how how are they treated going forward? Um so, you know, depending on what the um situation is. So you could have businesses that are, uh you wanna go over like home business, home occupation?
Right.
And then, yeah, why don't you do that?
Well, um actually, this is a question from Kelly. And um Kelly, if you can hear me, I'd be interested if you could use the chat function if you want. Do you have a specific scenario in mind or do you uh do you just have a general question? So let me just go through the general categories. So um there's a distinction in statute and in these regulations between home occupation and home business. Uh home business is uh something that um perhaps like a. Um could be a hairdressing salon is a good example. Or um that um where you could expect some customer traffic to your home. Um to conduct business, of course, this is all in the context of pre-COVID, I guess. Um and um there would be provision made for uh the impact. In terms of the number of staff that you would have that would um. Okay, um thanks Kelly. So it's um let me just finish this quick sentence and then and then move to your explicit example. Um so the questions that the that the um regulations would would pose for anybody proposing a home business such as that is. Basically, the impact on the neighborhood, noise, number of uh vehicle trips uh up and down the street, cars parked in the street. Um the, you know, just the kind of impacts of people coming and going in a residential neighborhood. Where you might expect um some degree of peace and quiet. So you have a question about um excavating, plowing and firewood. Firewood's a little bit different from the other two. Um excavating would be regarded as a contractor's yard and those and that's and that's a use that's explicitly zoned. Um and uh would be a conditional use permit. Um in uh rural and um general business. And so it's not permitted uh in in residential or rural residential. So um that's the first one. Uh firewood, um. That's a slightly trickier one to deal with because um. It's uh treated by the state potentially as a agricultural activity. Um and so then the scale and the intensity of it become a question. Um and so I think we have it defined. Um and it is conditional in general business and it is conditional in the conservation district, rural and rural. And it's not permitted uh anywhere else. So I hope that clarifies your question. And that, if you're looking for um where that where we're getting the answers from. It's in the large table that Brandy referenced before, which is many pages long. But it's a pretty simple process of working through the definition of the use that you're thinking about. And then it lists um in columns uh beside that. Uh the the various proposed zoning districts and using the P for permitted, C for conditional. And X for prohibited uh as to whether, you know, as to how that particular use is tuned in by district.
But um to return back to the question from from Kelly as well. Um I think she's also referring to a a business that exists, um and so it can continue to exist. Um that is how how zoning works. Um and um it really only, the question of uh whether it's an allowed use or not comes up. Uh really only in the extent that you want to um change it or expand it, um increase the intensity of it in some way. Um so if you continue operations as you have been, a change in the zoning does not um affect you to continue to operate the business.
Right, so so sometimes people refer to this as being grandfathered in. And um that's an okay term to use in this instance, but we put a little asterix on the grandfather thing. Um just to note that an expansion or an increase in the intensity of the use. So say it was a contractor's yard and the contractor has uh four people. Uh driving to the contractor's yard early in the morning and parking their private vehicles and then jumping in trucks and going off and doing their thing. If all of a sudden the contractor puts on two new crews and it goes from four cars to twelve. Then um that could be determined to be an increase in intensity and that my course in consternation and review. So.
So there is a section in the regulations that deals with non-conformities. Um it's up in the very front of the document, it's um in um chapter one thirty. Um so you can find information there about your non-conforming use, uh if you look at the document. Um so we've also got um a follow-up question about the general business district. And the change in the lot coverage and the minimum lot size. Um and there is a rationale, ask what the rationale behind that is, and there is one. Um so those business um areas, the general business district, those are not within um areas that are served by infrastructure. By water or sewer. So you're looking at properties that need to have um a septic system, a well. And um they now need to also have enough uh green space to do stormwater management. And these things are mutually exclusive generally, they they all need their own space and have separation distances from them. So it really means that uh the larger lot um is needed. Um and the lower lot coverage, because you need the green space uh for stormwater, uh onsite stormwater management.
And yeah, so you've got onsite wastewater, onsite stormwater, and you've got um the well. And then typically, if you think of the kinds of businesses that that are there, it's repair shops. Or other kinds of businesses with a kind of a retail aspect. So you've got a fair amount of impervious surface for the parking area and for storage, say of um customers' vehicles or something. And then you've got generally a fairly large structure in terms of its roof, um which is also impervious. So you've got this uh need to accommodate um all this uh stormwater. From the actual site onsite, I hope that helps.
And we have another question um of asked from Sue Ann about um single residences. Being converted into multiple multi-unit buildings and asking um how readily that will be able to happen. And I think the answer there is it uh depends on the zoning district. Um the zoning districts in the village and in the resort area that have infrastructure service. Um can can are capable of managing a greater density of of development and therefore. A li- a higher density is is allowed. Um in those cases, if there are existing single unit homes on lots, it is possible that they may be able to be converted over. Um in the more rural parts of town, um that's going to become more difficult. And require larger um acreage to do, um to have multi-unit, but multi-unit housing is allowed throughout town. Um it is also possible for single-family homes, and this is a state um mandate. Um any single-family home can have a accessory dwelling, basically a second dwelling unit on the property. Um and that's all, that's been the case uh for some time and remains um the case going forward. So those are ways in which you could end up with multi um units, um buildings. Or properties. Um yeah. So I'm trying to see if there are no new questions or if we've hit. Many of the ones that are not. And um Samuel Starks, we we do know that you've asked a specific question, we still see it about your property, but we need to look at that. Um and once again, um Rod and I are um professional planners. We were hired by the Town of War and we've been working with the Planning Commission on the zoning revision. So I think we're out of questions that have been immediately asked. Um I'm gonna say, I don't know that we have anyone who is on the phone. Uh but if we do, if there's anyone on the phone who wants to um. Unmute themselves and speak up now, that would be um perfectly acceptable. I don't think we do have any phone connections.
Right.
So I think we're okay there.
Okay.
And we did have. Another question come in here. Um oh, we've got a couple, okay, so um. Samuel Starks asked about the timing of response. So we, as I said, the planning commission's having a second meeting um on June fourteen. And then we'll be working through responses um as we, it's there isn't a specific uh time perhaps. But the goal is that by the June twenty eighth um planning commission meeting, there will at least be the compilation and an initial. Um response to those and then the planning commission will be reviewing those um at that meeting. And at subsequent meetings as needed um going forward. So that's the general timeline that we anticipate.
So the expectation that the planning commission set out for this meeting is um that we would be in. The mode of receiving input and questions and not transmitting uh answers to those questions. Or responding to to people's um comments directly. So we're we're certainly in the receptive mode rather than the um responsive mode. And that at the, once the second meeting is concluded, the um questions and comments will be collated. We expect there to be some overlap in people's questions, which will point to possibly ways in which we could make minor amendments. To the text of the document to improve clarity or to describe concepts more clearly. And then there'll be some, if you like, policy questions that the planning commission will have to sit with and consider. Um as to um whether to change district boundaries or or the or the details of what are permitted uses and conditional uses, for example. But um right now, it's not a, it's not intended that we debate the. The issues so much as um just simply try and collate and gather. Uh people's input and questions uh for consideration subsequently.
Okay, and then we have a question from um Jennifer. Um who wants us to explain how the site plan review um process works. Um their site plan review is required for anything that's other than single and two-family homes. And agricultural related uses. Um site plan review can be done administratively for small projects by the zoning administrator. And then for larger projects, um it would be done through the DRB. Um right now, that is often done in Warren in conjunction with a conditional use review. Uh one of the changes that uh is being proposed in these regulations is to make a lot more of uses permitted with site plan review. Instead of conditional, which rolls the site plan review in, but adds additional criteria to the review as well. Uh to go along with the conditional use review. Um so this will hopefully be a streamlining, um particularly for sort of small changes. To existing businesses going forward should really make that process go easily. Many of that, many types of of small things will be able to be done uh by the zoning administrator. If you're interested in looking and trying to get a better sense of what's the difference between ma- major and minor is, there is actually a. A section in chapter four of the draft that deals with site plan review. And I'm trying to find my page right now. Um and in there, it it details out what um what those are. So if you're building a new building, you know, that's a major project. But if you're just making some minor um modifications or a small um change. That might be a minor um project. So um you can look through that, that's actually section forty-three oh four, site plan review. So if you're interested in learning more about that, you should look at that piece. And then um Sue Ann also asked about how to um. How to report on errors in the mapping or to make um comments on the actual boundaries of the maps. This is a bit of a challenge in in the COVID era. Um if we uh were doing in-person meetings, we would have big maps and we'd be writing on them. And we'd be able to talk to individuals about their properties. Uh the easiest way at this point to to get that information to us and to the planning commission is to to send the message. Um indicate um the address of the property or if you know it, the parcel number, um so we can find it. Um and tell us um, you know, what your message is about it. Um we did use the um parcel tax maps, um parcels from the tax maps as the base for this. And we do know that there are sometimes errors and issues with that. And so if you've got um something that you feel is not accurate, um do let us know about that.
And Ronnie asks, are planned unit developments still permitted? And the answer in brief is yes. In fact, um there's a whole category of subdivision that we've um developed. Uh the planning commission refers to it as a conservation subdivision. And this is a a perfect um companion to the planned unit development process. Whereby um residential dwelling units are clustered together. And open space can be shared um as part integral to the sub subdivision design. So that our forest lands or meadowlands can be preserved and housing can be um. With high amen- with a high level of amenity and access to uh services can be clustered together. Uh which should save um on energy consumption as well as provide, as I said, high amenity. And then um so again, Mr. Starks asks, is anybody from the planning commission is present? Mr. Starks, um I I think the best thing for you to do perhaps would be to visit the town website. The majority um of the planning commission are present tonight. Oh, we didn't go, we didn't introduce them uh at the beginning of the meeting. In fact, I think all of the planning commission are present tonight. You'll find their names uh on the town webpage. And um the easiest way to get in touch with the planning commission is to contact um Ruth Robbins, the zoning administrator. Uh who works at the town and uh her ma- email address is also on the town website. If you wish to connect or contact the planning commission directly.
Jim, do you wanna go around and do planning commission and uh introduce Ruth and the planning commission members? So folks can put faces to names and faces together?
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, I can do that. Um I'm Jim Sanford on the current uh planning commission chairman. Uh Mike Ketchel, who will uh maybe load up his picture here, is the vice chairman. Uh Randy Graves is a long-term member, a longtime member of the planning commission. Um uh Mike Bridgewater is uh Michael Ketchel, I've already been over. Camilla Bain is. Is a planning commission member and a select board member. Uh Ruth Robbins is our zoning administrator. Um Dan Raddock is a planning commission member as well as Jennifer Filas. And I think that should be seven. Um yeah, I think that's, I think that's everybody. And uh please feel free to reach out to any one of us or better still, all of us. Um through the uh through the uh website. Um uh um Mike has tried to make it uh easy for people to understand. There's an introduction by all of us about the various different uh um. Um zoning areas in the town and you'll get to know a little bit who we are and what we do. And uh there's a, there's a pretty good explanation of the changes we made and the various uh. Uh um regulations of the different zoning districts on that site. I highly encourage you to go to that. Planning commissioners are um are volunteers that are appointed by the select board and we report to the select board. And the select board will also have public meetings on these before they are officially on the new land use regulation. Uh document before it's um officially um accepted.
Okay.
If I can just add to really simplify things for people, if they go to the the main town website. Of Warren VT dot org, there's a banner right up at the top of the homepage that if that. If you click on it at the end of the sentence that that introduces the fact that there's a. A separate site for the land use and development regulations, it's gonna take you right there. And there are some wonderful vignettes that are done by each of the planning commission members talking about different parts of the revision. And there's a place at the bottom where you can very easily um write any questions or comments that you want that get sent to. Um the planning commission members as well as uh the place sense Brandy and and Rod.
So I think we've 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 covered most of the written general questions. And there are a couple, as I said, property-specific ones that we will get back to to folks on um. Just as a bit of of orientation and we've we've thrown out, you know, sections of the ordinance um. And quite a few as we've been talking here um. For those of you, you know, homeowners and property owners who want to 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 learn more and to figure out what would be happening on. On your property as a result of the zoning change, um our recommendation is that you start with the map. And figure out what district you're in if you haven't done that already. Um so from the website, you can get to the map. And you type in your address in the search box in the corner of the map and you'll you'll pop up and you'll be able to figure out what. A zoning district you would be in. Um and then if you go to the actual draft regulations um. And take a look at this, you know, it's it's a, it is a large document. Um but the good news is that you really just need to find the targeted pieces that are are relevant to you. Um and so really the place to start is with your zoning districts, which are in chapter two. And you'll see the zoning districts are all listed there. Um so you can go and find the specific um page that's relevant to your zoning district and then. The big tables that we've mentioned are at the end of that zoning district chapter and they show all of the. Standards for lot sizes and setbacks and the dimensional requirements and then all the uses that are allowed in the zoning district. So you can get a better um sense there of what um what is going on. Um and then if you have questions, I think uh we also had a a question in here sort of about what the timeframe was. For submitting questions. We are strongly encouraging um people to get us questions by sort of mid-June. Um so the second meeting being on the fourteenth, I think, what did we say? Did we say the night? The twenty fir- we said the twenty first, didn't we? Yes, I think we're we're gonna try, we're gonna encourage people to get uh all comments in by the twenty first. So that when the planning commission does meet again on on June twenty eighth, um they've got. As many of the comments as possible to to work through.
Yeah, that will give us time to collect them and organize them so that people can identify common themes and uh provide a meaningful response.
So is there anyone who had more um comments or questions that they wanted to to get to or um? Have something that they want to have us go over again? Uh throw out one more chance if you'd rather speak than uh type. Um I think we're we're at the point where that's um that's fine as well um. Um wanna unmute yourself and and say something and then um. Can do that. Okay.
All right.
Well, this is when we would normally tell you to make sure you eat all the cookies before you leave, because we don't wanna take them home. But we're all home, so they're our own cookies.
You're up. You you just need to find your own cookies. Um Jim, would you like to make any closing remarks?
I am gonna throw up that final slide one more time.
No, I I would just encourage people to, you know, to visit the website, see what's going on. Especially with your own piece of property, but but for the whole town. It's not the. Uh the the reason why the Warren is such a great place to live largely due to pro- to what's happening on land that. People don't own, somebody else does. So don't look at your, don't just look at your own property. Look at the whole town and see, then you'll be able to, I think, or you should be able to understand where we're. Where the, wh- where we're headed with the whole thing. Um it's not just, it just, it's not just specifically related to individuals' property and what they can do on it. But to the town as a whole. So I I'd encourage people to look at the broader picture here as well as your own thing. And please reach out to the planning commission members or especially to the planning commission website. With any concerns you have or uh you know, anything else you wanna talk about.
Thanks, Jim.
Uh. Mike asks about whether Margo, Margo has been here, but I think she may have left um. Mike, and she may have been having some connection troubles, because I think she came and went more than once. I don't believe that she is currently on the meeting.
No, it doesn't look like it. So just so everyone knows, Margo uh works for Sugar Bush and I think Mike had some questions about her reactions, but okay.
I thought I thought Margo sent an email earlier saying that she had some issues to review tonight.
Uh we received that. Um it's a, it's a map with a series of kind of cryptic. Text box remarks um that will need some analysis, but um they don't think it's.
Yeah, she did send it to us and we have it, so we'll we'll look through that.
We received it late this afternoon.
Okay, good.
Again, this is not the last time you can make comments here. This is the first time. So you you have plenty of opportunities to to discuss this.
Yep, and so um as shown up here on the the slide, this is where the information is. Um this is the roughly the schedule. Um and then when. The planning commission gets to the point of having a final draft, there is actually a formal adoption process. Um that includes hearings from both the planning commission and select board. So this, uh as Jim said, is really the first step um in moving in that direction. But uh the town is really not up to the formal adoption process yet, so. There will still be many um opportunities along the way for review and comment, but uh. We always encourage people that comments received earlier are better. Because there's more opportunity to to respond to them um more meaningfully and. It it, so we strongly encourage that.
So yes, this is a, it, so there's another opportunity. You might, you might consider this as an informal public meeting. There's another informal public meeting. Then the planning commission um in conjunction with us at PlaySense will will sift through the comments and the questions. Making the needed revisions and then move forward to the formal adoption process, which is. Two public hearings by the planning commission and then an interval of time and a report and a draft document that may again. Exhibit some changes from that process. And then that will move forward to the select board and then they will have their own public hearings. Um which are usually scheduled some distance apart to enable um people to comment. Um but can be quite close together. And then the select board will vote uh on adopting the land use regulations uh at that time. So if there are no more questions, uh thank you everybody for your attention and taking out, taking the time out to uh join us this evening. Again, just to repeat what Jim said and Mike said, uh we tried as far as possible to uh set up. COVID-proof forms of communication. So there are websites. There's a website, planning dot Warren VT dot org that will help you um feed your comments to us. And uh also allow you to access all the information that you've seen presented here tonight uh in 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 your own pace. So if you have any questions, please feel free to get in touch and thank you and good night.
Rod, Randy has his hand up.
Oh, Randy, okay.
Oh, thanks. Um for our our residents and taxpayers who who haven't had a chance to follow along with this process. I just wanted to take the time to publicly thank uh Brandy and Rod from PlaySense. They have guided us uh through the writing of the town plan, which was thirteen or fourteen months. And then they have been with us um for the last sixteen months helping us with a with a land use regulations. And um for me, they've been. I cannot imagine having tackled this without their help and their professionalism. Um they've been insightful, knowledgeable, prescient, up-to-date, uh and pleasures to work with. Um and I and I wanted to make sure to say that publicly uh during this process.
Thank you, Randy.
I would second that.
Thank you so much.
So any, anything final? Otherwise, I think we will, we'll sign off for the evening.